Good evening and welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Rebecca Patey. I am the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding the proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the following proposed permit action for Alabama Power Company's James H. Miller Jr. Electric Generating Plant Ash Pond located near 4250 Porter Road, Quentin, Alabama, RE 5130. The proposed initial issuance of a Coal Combustion Residuals (CCR) Permit Number 37-51 to close the Plant Miller Ash Pond. The purpose of the hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the proposed permit actions. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On September 11th, 2020, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website and published in the Birmingham News. In addition, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advance notice of the permit proceedings. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record of these Copies of the public notice, permit application, preliminary determination, and draft permit have been made available for inspection by the public at the office of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public and anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements or those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of each statement may be presented orally. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to ADM by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department's staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. This proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit applications. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its completed response to the all comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit actions. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comment considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in the hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit actions and develop responses to comments for the proposed permits. The hearing record, final permit determination, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let's move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, representatives of the department's land division, then a representative of Alabama Power if one is present, then any elected officials or their representatives who have pre-registered to speak. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered during the preregistration offered online or by phone, and then those that registered on-site at this hearing. I now recognize Mr. Devin Jenkins to present a statement on behalf of the department's land division.
Good evening. My name is Devin Jenkins and on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management, we thank you for participating in the permitting process for the James H. Miller Jr. Electric Generating Plant Permit 3751. Alabama Power Company has submitted to the Alabama Department of Environmental Management an application for the initial issuance of a Coal Combustion Residuals or CCR permit to close for the Plant Miller Ash Pond at the James H. Miller Jr. Electric Generating Plant. The Plant Miller Ash Pond is a CCR surface impoundment located in Sections 27, 28, 33, and 34, Township 16 South, Range 5 West in Jefferson County, Alabama, consisting of approximately 598 acres with a disposal area that consists of approximately 353 and a half acres. The proposed permit would require the permity to manage CCR in accordance with the conditions of the proposed permit, ADM Administrative Code R 335 13-15, Standards for the Disposal of Coal Combustion Residuals in Landfills and Surface Impoundments, and the approved permit application. Groundwater monitoring and corrective action requirements in the proposed permit establish a groundwater monitoring system of wells that provide an accurate representation of the groundwater quality underlying the unit and a groundwater monitoring plan to establish appropriate sampling and analysis of the system to detect the presence of CCR constituents. For units where CCR constituents exceed acceptable levels, the proposed permit establishes corrective action requirements to remediate contamination caused by the unit. Closure criteria in the proposed permit establish requirements for all units to be closed in accordance with specified standards and timeframes. Post-closure criteria in the proposed permit require each unit to be maintained for a period of time after closure, including maintaining groundwater, monitoring, and corrective action to ensure the long-term safety of the units that are closing. The permity must comply with all conditions of the proposed permit, except to the extent and for the duration such non-compliance is authorized by a variance granted by ADM. The first variance request to exclude boron is an Appendix 4 Assessment Monitoring Constituent. The second variance requests groundwater protection standards of six micrograms per liter for cobalt, 15 micrograms per liter for lead, 40 micrograms per liter for lithium, and 100 micrograms per liter for molybdenum. The third variance requests the final grade of the cover system be less than 5% and greater than 25%. Based on our review of the initial permit application, the department has made a preliminary determination that the proposed facility would be in compliance with the applicable state and federal solid waste disposal requirements and thus protective of public health and the environment. The proposed permit includes the following conditions. One, upon renewal, the permit would be valid for a 10-year period. Two, the permity would conduct groundwater monitoring semi-annually. Three, the permity would implement and maintain a corrective action program. Four, the permity would maintain the integrity of the final cover system throughout the life of the permit and post-closure period. Five, the permity would at all times properly maintain the facility and all systems in accordance with the application and the permit. Six, the permity would obtain the approval of ADM for any change or modification to the facility or a system which might otherwise result in non-compliance with the permit or ADM's administrative code. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to provide an opportunity to receive public comment regarding the application and proposed permit. The department welcomes your input to this process and will consider all technical comments prior to making a final decision concerning the issuance of this permit and will provide a written response to each commenter and those requesting specific notice of our decision. Thank you again for participating in the hearing.
I do not have a representative preregistered from the permit applicant, so we will proceed to the public official. We will now receive public comment from Mayor Charles Nix.
Welcome everyone to West Jefferson. Believe me, I will not take up much of your time. I want to thank everyone here for their attendance to show their concern for our environment. Special thanks to organizations such as the Warrior River Water Coopers for their efforts in monitoring activities that not affect our rivers and streams. I also want to thank our neighbors in Alabama Power's Miller Plant for their ongoing efforts in cleaning up our environment. I've had the opportunity to watch this plant from its inception and I've seen the measures taken throughout the years to meet changing standards. I have worked along with our service organization as we picked up trash along our roadways. Alabama Power is a company that is conscious of our environment. I also want to thank our friends from ADM as you listen to comments concerning this permit. I believe you help people on both sides that have the best interest of our environment at heart, although they may have different ideas of how to achieve this goal. I personally lack the knowledge concerning disposal of coal combustion residuals in windfields and surface impoundments. Therefore, I will not be commenting on the permit. Thank you.
We will now proceed to the receipt of comments from members of the public. As indicated in the public notice for this hearing, oral testimony for each registered speaker is limited to seven minutes. Anyone has a prepared statement that cannot be presented in the seven-minute timeframe, please use your timeframe for oral testimony to summarize your comments and submit your full statement to the department and write. So I recognize Seth Hammack.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. Thanks for hearing me and all of us here tonight about this support edition. My name is Seth Hammack, chairman of the Energy Institute of Alabama. It's an organization that's made up of the entities that generate, transmit, and distribute electricity in Alabama. There are six of us that work in this industry in Alabama. Two of these entities generate and transmit is Tennessee Valley Authority, Power South Energy Corp. We have three members that are in distribution only. That's Alabama Rural Electric Association represents 22 electric cooperatives in Alabama. Then you have Electric Cities, there are 36 cities, Electric Cities where they're using limits. Then we have the Alabama Mistral Electric Authority that provides a wholesale for nine of those electric cities, and then three companies that are Christian to live. Alabama Power Company is the only entity that does all three, generate, transmit, and distribute. I'm here tonight to ask your favorable consideration of the permit being considered, and I would make the following points. First, material will be excavated and moved further away from the waterways which create a buffer of up to 450 yards of more than four football fields away from the river. Number two, the facility size will be reduced by approximately 125 acres or by more than a third. Third point, Alabama Power is applying advanced engineering to construct a reinforced dike system to provide additional structural integrity. Number four, a specially engineered drainage and collection system will be installed for additional long-term protection. And my final point is this, those of us that work in this industry in Alabama live here too. Our families live here, children, our grandchildren, and we're going to follow the signs, do what's required to make sure that the people of Alabama are protected and that we're not going to put our own families at risk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I now recognize Blake Hardwich.
My name is Blake Hardwich, and I thank you for giving me the opportunity to submit my comments tonight. I serve as Executive Director of the DUSA Alabama River Recovery Association, and I also serve as Secretary and Treasurer of Coalition for Alabama Waterways. And I come to you tonight on both of those, both of the capacities. The Coalition of Alabama Waterways, also known as COLA, is dedicated to promoting the full utilization of Alabama's river systems. We seek to maintain and increase the use of Alabama's five rivers. Our state's inland waterways provide an effective and efficient environmental friendly means of supporting domestic commerce and international trade. The communities along Alabama's rivers allow the waterways to provide sustainable, low-impact transportation infrastructure, tourism, and recreational opportunities, municipal water supply, and industrial withdrawals and discharge. Accordingly, COLA and its members have strong interest in the quality and the quantity of water resources as well as economic development throughout our state. Our member organizations include the Warrior Tom Biffey Waterway, the Tennessee Tom Biffey Waterway, the DUSA Alabama, and the Tennessee River Valley Association, and also the Trail Rivers Waterway, which is the ACM, the Appalachia Coal or Chadatu Chamber. Alabama Power has been and continues to be a valuable partner to all of our waterway associations. They have been committed to meeting the most current, affordable, and future energy needs of consumers located throughout the river basins and communities in Alabama. They are committed to a safe closure process, but because it involves the safety of communities and the environment we all share. Recently, members of the public were educated on the steps of Alabama Power's plans to provide long-term protection if granted the permit to seal and place COLA storage sites that occurred earlier this year. It is my understanding through those public hearings that material will be excavated and moved further away from our waterways which creates a buffer of up to 450 yards from the river, a distance longer than four football fields. The facility size will also be reduced to approximately 125 acres or by more than a third. Alabama Power is applying advanced engineering to construct a reinforced dike system to provide additional structural integrity. A specially engineered drainage and collection system will be installed for additional long-term protection. Federal rules that were supposed to be supported by both the Obama and Trump administrations provide for this way of safely closing COLA storage sites. The EPA has approved the method of sealing the COLA in place as being just as protective of the environment as removing COLA and transporting it elsewhere. Both closure methods, seal in place and close by removal, require electricity utilities to meet the same groundwater performance standards. Sealing the sites in place also avoids potential safety issues that can arise from trucking large volumes of COLA through Alabama's communities for decades. For these reasons, we support Alabama's closure and corrective action plans. Scientific data proves that these plans will achieve compliance with groundwater protection standards. I urge you to move forward with the CCR permitting process and allowing Alabama COLA to use the seal-in-place closing method. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hardwich.
My name is Chris Arnold, President of Alabama Coal and Water. Alabama Coal and Water was formed 30 years ago by small, small coal operators to opportunity to compete or pull their coal together and compete with larger coal companies and out-of-state coal companies for long-term business. This has allowed our members to be proactive and rather attentive, reactive to permit conditions. Our membership produces over 1.5 million tons of coal per year. We employ 500 direct and 1,500 indirect employees in our jobs in the state of Alabama. Since the coal off the storm, the Alabama Coal and Water has delivered over 45 million tons of coal to Alabama Power to generate affordable and reliable energy for our state. Alabama Power employs the experience of multiple independent firms with deep expertise in civil engineering projects that concluded that sealing their COLA sites in place is a safe and effective option. The EPA has approved the method of sealing COLA in place as being just as protective of the environment as moving the COLA and transporting it elsewhere, as both options must meet the same groundwater performance standards. More than 60% of all COLA sites in the southeast will be sealed in place because that is the best option for those sites rather than excavating and moving to a landfill. At the Plant Miller site, the material will be excavated and moved further away from the waterways, which creates a buffer of up to 450 yards from the river. The facility size will be reduced by a third. A reinforced dike system will be constructed to provide structural integrity. An engineered drainage and collection system will be installed for additional protection. Alabama Power will use the latest tools and technology to close ash ponds, monitor the water quality for decades, and continue to generate affordable and reliable energy for our state. Thank you.
My name is John McNabb. I am the General Manager of Ethel Coal Company in Peter Parish, Alabama. I have been doing business with Alabama Power for over 10 years, have dealt with their engineering group, their coal buying group, and other facets of the business. I don't think I have to tell you folks that they're quite professional and then good engineering group and know what they're doing. I am a fourth-generation homeowner, additionally being the General Manager and a potential investor in Ethel Coal. I'm also a partner, managing operating officer, digging special materials into Wyoming and actually could be unselling coal to the Miller Power plant. So we have 140 people here and 450 people in Wyoming who are interested in seeing coal industry survive and figure three to five times that amount of people elsewhere in the country that would support the project. The mine I started working at in 1972 weighed trucks was a mine that was started in 1928 when my grandfather bought it. When that mine disposed of their residue from their coal raising plants, they put it in a big pot. And today, unfortunately, when you go and you look at that, it's still leaking large water. Much like other facets of society, it happened over the years, and I'll probably use the masks that we all carry with us today as an example. As technology changes, so does society. And technology that's in place in 1928 when that mine was put in is a lot different than it is today. But Alabama Power has laid out, or Miller Station, is a technology that's all over the years, it's a technology that is used in multiple coal mines and ready-to-dislose sites, including solid waste disposal all across the country. It's not new technology, it is safe. Again, those folks in 1928 put in that mine as well as those who started. Do we wear masks or not wear masks? Have adjusted to the technology and the science or some things that come along. And Alabama Power has done that with everything they are going for this site. Thank you for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. McNabb. I now recognize Eva Dillard.
Good evening, Hearing Officer A.D. My name is Eva Dillard, and I'm the Staff Attorney at Black Warrior Riverkeeper. We will be filing formal comments, but I appreciate the opportunity here tonight to make a couple of points that we will include in those comments. As stated by the Hearing Officer at the outset, whether or not A.D. makes the decision to issue the closure permit is determined by whether or not the applicant has satisfied the requirements of applicable environmental laws and regulations. As proposed by Alamo Power here, the Plant Miller closure plan to cap in place its coal ash waste will not control, minimize, or eliminate post-closure infiltration of liquids into the coal ash waste, or releases of coal combustion residuals, leachate, or contaminated runoff into groundwater and surface water. This is required by 40 CFR Section 257.102D. It is undisputed here that Plant Miller sits in the drainages of formerly intermittent and perennial streams. After capping in place, available data shows that not all of the consolidated and dry ash will be above the groundwater levels. The lower levels of coal ash in the former ash pond at Miller will be sitting in the groundwater and stream drainages after closure. As a result, groundwater will continue to migrate in and out of the waste and into the surrounding groundwater and surface water in the Locust Fork of the Black Warrior River. Because the current closure plan will leave ash in an unlined impoundment, submerged in groundwater with porous media that cannot meet applicable standards for closure under the 2015 Coal Ash Rule. For this reason alone, A.D. cannot, cannot issue the closure plan as proposed for cap in place. A reason why A.D. should not issue the closure permit as proposed is because the current plan simply will not work. Alamo's Power's approach here is to cap and allow monitored natural attenuation to address significant groundwater contamination at the site. In other words, don't remove and safely dispose of the waste. Instead, monitor it and hope it'll go away. But it won't. The monitored natural attenuation that Alamo proposes through cap in place doesn't work for coal ash that sits in water and continually discharges into the groundwater like Plant Miller's. Moreover, A.D. has acknowledged in a November 2019 communication to Alamo Power that monitored natural attenuation doesn't work on inorganics like the arsenic, cobalt, and lithium that's contained in the groundwater at Plant Miller. Finally, monitored natural attenuation requires that an aquifer has sufficient capacity in order to absorb the water and the contaminants. But Alamo Power here has failed to demonstrate whether or not it's a feasible remedy based on site-specific conditions. They haven't analyzed whether or not the aquifer has sufficient capacity for attenuation. And finally, Alamo Power is asking essentially for A.D.'s blessing on a project with enormous environmental impacts for the state that the applicant has not fully outlined, hasn't fully vetted, or explored. And in these tenuous circumstances, A.D. should not issue the closure plan of that cap in place. Instead of authorizing closure by cap in place, we ask that Alabama join the growing majority of states in the Southeast. These states are moving to excavate coal ash which rests in groundwater or connects geologically with surface waters like the coal ash at Plant Miller. A.D.'s coal ash presentation on its website only suggests that other states have laws that mandate excavation. That simply isn't true. Only Virginia mandates wholesale excavation of coal ash, but other states, utilities in North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Tennessee have started excavating ash in their waterways, which is the approach that the 2015 Coal Ash Rule requires here. States like South Carolina are showing that excavation can be safely and economically performed in a time period that isn't too different from cap in place and that levels of dangerous pollutants like arsenic decline sharply once the coal ash is removed. Cap in place will not assure a safe, healthful, and productive environment for Alabama. Only excavation and recycling or removal to a mine landfill will accomplish A.D.'s stated mission. We ask the Department to require excavation and removal as the only viable closure plan that will meet the requirements of the 2015 Coal Ash Rule and more importantly, protect the people and the environment of Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dillard. I'll now recognize Mr. Nelson Broke.
Hi. My name is Nelson Broke, Black Warrior Riverkeeper, and I appreciate y'all pulling the opportunity for us to submit some comments. Plant Miller was constructed on the Locust Fork of the Black Warrior River, right where Village Creek flows into the river back in the late 1970s. And along with this massive coal-fired power plant, which is the number one CO2 emitting power plant in the entire nation, came the construction of a very large coal ash pond or pit. And it was constructed up on the hillside on a bluff overlooking the Locust Fork, just downstream of the confluence of Village Creek and the Locust Fork. It was constructed with a large earthen dike system, which essentially created a massive, over 300-acre lake where coal ash could be deposited after coal is burned at the power plant. The coal ash pond was constructed on top of two flowing streams that flow into the Locust Fork of the Black Warrior River. Those two streams are still there today underneath the unlined leaking ash pond. So all of the toxic coal ash waste that's been deposited by Miller over the years has been contaminating groundwater and surface water for over 40 years. This is our opportunity to get it right, to require Alamo Power to remove, to excavate all of that toxic ash, to do away with the very real connection, the toxic, polluting connection between the ash and these two streams, the area of groundwater, and the Locust Fork of the Black Warrior River. What y'all are proposing along with Alamo Power is to let that toxic ash sit there and stay as far into the future as anybody can imagine, and that's a huge mistake. What we need for the future of the people of Alabama and for our natural heritage and all who use the river downstream is to right a wrong and get rid of this toxic mess. The Miller ash pond is contaminating groundwater with arsenic, cobalt, and lithium. And also, there are a lot of other toxic contaminants in coal ash. While they may not be triggering the warning bells saying that levels are over acceptable standards, there's still other contaminants that are also ending up in groundwater and in the river. There are active seeps coming out of this ash pond into these tributaries and into the river. This is not just a situation where the groundwater is being contaminated because of the lack of a liner. The plan to cap in place coal ash at Plant Miller fails to seriously address that this is an unlined leaking impoundment that will continue to discharge toxic pollutants into groundwater, into these two streams, and ultimately into the river for many decades to come. The river is frequented by thousands of people every year. Thousands of people live downstream. There are major public drinking water source intakes on the river, downstream of Plant Miller, namely the two closest ones being for the city of Bessemer and the Warrior River Water Authority, which provides drinking water to the majority of West Jefferson County. Most people who are out on the river do not understand or know that this massive coal ash pond is situated up on the hillside behind a large earthen dam that's precariously situated in a stream valley. And they don't necessarily know that there is a potential risk for catastrophic failure of that dike. So as long as this facility sits in place with two streams and groundwater saturating and flowing beneath it, the potential risk of a catastrophic failure of this facility will exist far into the future. So I would just really encourage A.D. to not take orders from Alamo Power and to reassess this plan and think about the people of Alabama and our natural resources and require this behemoth Alamo Power to do what's right, because that's the right thing to do here. Thank you.
Now recognize Julie Price.
I won't take too much of your time. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I think it's incredible that A.D. offers the opportunity for public participation. It offers a great opportunity, and I appreciate all the people that come out this evening. I teach in the Department of Environmental Health Sciences at UAB. I'm actually teaching environmental policy this week, and I invited some students to come out here because this is the environmental policy at work. It's really exciting, and I appreciate all the thought that's going into this for multiple parties. I appreciate being able to have the opportunity to give a public comment about the coal ash ponds. In my opinion, there's a hefty cost to move the ash. I don't think anyone can deny the cost to move the ash. But I would echo what Ms. Dillard said about this is what's happening in most other utility districts across the Southeast. The only way to guarantee that we will not continue to have pollution of our groundwater and surface water is to move the ash into wine landfills or through recycling bins. Right now, the situation that they're in and the proposal of the cap in place does not assure us that human health will be protected. And it's important, most companies right now are looking at the long-term social and environmental effects of these sorts of questions and weighing them with the costs, the true human cost, just to stick a price to move it, if that makes sense to y'all. So, and I also hold a great fear that we'll end up with some sort of catastrophic failure, like the Kingston ash spill. And the Warrior River is a critical drinking source. It's a critical source of recreation, which is important for quality of life and human health. It's a great source of revenue for us, for our outdoor tourism and recreation. So the river has value beyond just the, you know, the non-human life in it. And we're all going to protect that. So in my opinion, the right thing to do is require that the ash is moved out of this facility. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Price. I now recognize Patrick Kagan.
Thank you. Patrick Kagan, I'm President of the Alamo Coal Association. The Alamo Coal Association supports A.D.'s draft permit to save closing and sealing of the CCR account at Plant Miller, Plant and Alamo Power's plant and stink plant. Tonight's public hearing parts milestone in the decade-long process to end the inadequate stores of CCR and open accountants. The rules used to develop the plan to closing Plant Miller's CCR account were developed by the EPA under the Obama administrations and left largely unchanged by President Trump's EPA. Let me say that again. The EPA revoked President Obama and President Trump during the closing and sealing of the CCR account in place. It is safe and effective, and let that in the rule for re-reading. The Alamo Coal Association strongly encourages A.D. to issue this permit. The bottom line is that de-watering, consolidating, and safely sealing the CCR stored at Plant Miller is the most effective way to mitigate the risk posed by the stores of CCR and open account. We strongly encourage A.D. to issue this permit and not delay, because delay is where the risk is. We believe that Alamo Power's plan will protect the environment, and public health should be implemented. I also want to thank A.D. for figuring out how to allow the public to come in and give comments in this era of COVID and pandemic and the steps that y'all have taken to ensure the health and safety of those folks like myself providing comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kagan. Is this just gonna go off the record for a few minutes?
Okay.
Okay, we are back on the record, and I now recognize Casey Shelton.
Good evening. I must say, this is the first time I've been on a basketball court in 35 years, okay? So y'all have a great meeting place. Let me tell you who I am. I'm Casey Shelton. I am the Business Manager for Assistant Counsel in U-19 of the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. I represent the 3,000 union that are employed by Alamo Power Cup. That is linemen, people that work over here at Miller's Stink Plant, it's people as far as even Farley Nuclear Plant. I have about 3,000 members, and I'm here to represent their interests tonight. I do want to commend you for your career path. A.D., environment, very important role, and I commend you for what you do. I do want to talk about, you know, if you're looking for a CCR expert, I'm not your guy, but I understand people and the people that I represent. For five years, I was President of Alabama Electrical Workers Association, so I understand these guys and the roles they portray. For example, our linemen that serve our customers in Alabama have been to Chicago this year, they've been to New Jersey, Beaumont, Texas twice, and Lake Charles, Louisiana twice, restoring service during all the hurricanes. restoring service during all the hurricanes. So the people I represent are good, strong people that care about the environment. So here's what I'm here to tell you. The union guys that have worked there for years, such as myself, 35 years, when we look at Alabama Power and the job they do when it comes to environment, they are true stewards of our environment, okay? They do a lot of things, and the workers I represent are there when nobody's looking, okay? And to us, they are good stewards in the environment. And I'll give you another example. As one of my part-time jobs, formerly for the last five years, I was a high school fishing coach. So we got involved with a lot of stuff in area lakes. And Alabama Power doesn't get a lot of credit for this stuff of helping young people in fish habitat and, you know, water planning for aquatic life and stuff like that. They don't get a lot of credit for that. But to me, that's one of the best examples of what a leader they are in representing our environment. So how does that tie into the CCR? They have a good plan. It affects a lot of people. Without this, you know, permit, I think it would affect a lot of people. Number one, the people I represent, their employees. And I also think it would have a negative impact on the ratepayers in state Alabama. And we're all aware, I won't bore you with that, but we're all aware of the struggles and hardships that they have had throughout this year and ongoing. We don't know when it will end. But I'm here to support, on behalf of those 3,000 people that I represent, that you give that permit and let them deal with that coal ash on site. I am. And I appreciate y'all's time. And in the spirit of, you got a lot of people to hear from, I just ask you, my 3,000 people, that's our livelihood. We support them. We see things they do good that a lot of times they don't get a lot of credit for. But I think this is something that they need. And I think it's a good thing. I think the science backs it up. But I do ask you to just take my comments in consideration, and I do appreciate your time. Any questions for me? Good? Okay. Thank y'all for your time.
Now recognize Bill Blackman.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name's Bill Blackman. I'm the business manager for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 136. We represent the construction and maintenance members of the electrical industry throughout central Alabama, up to and including the contractor workforce that works here at Miller's steam plant. I've spent several years out there making a good living at it, and several hundred of my members have as well. Plant Miller has been a critical part of providing affordable power to all of the Alabamians, and we need to be sure we continue that by making good, strong decisions here today. The option to close the coal ash site in place seems to be a sound one. It's been vetted by scientists and engineers and independent experts. The alternative to excavate the entire ash pond seems to be a bad option. It doesn't make much sense, common sense. The more you have human interaction with it, the more likely it is to have human error. It's important to recognize that the closure in place has been done in many, many places throughout the nation and is approved by the federal government and environmental requirements. We support Alabama's plan to close in place the ash pond here at Plant Miller. Thank you for your time.
And I recognize Keith Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Keith Johnson. I'm the director of the Alabama office of the Southern Environmental Law Center. I want to thank you for holding this meeting and for the protocol that you're doing to take care during COVID-19. We are still in the process of review of the draft CCR permit. This is not a complete, these are not our complete comments, but it's just a summary of the comments as you guys recommended and with the seven-minute timeline. First, I would just like to start off with just reminding ADEM, which you're well aware of, that this problem really didn't have to exist. Some industrial processes create wastewater by the nature of the process, but that wasn't true here. You didn't create wastewater by burning coal. You created ash. Alabama Power could have easily decided to move this coal ash when they wet-sleushed it to a dry-lined landfill away from water. Instead, they created this pollution problem where none existed before. They chose the most irresponsible, most polluting, and most dangerous way of disposing this ash beside our rivers and reservoirs. They took the water from the river, mixed it with the ash, and created the water pollution that you know exists there today. And it creates a risk, a catastrophic risk like we saw in Kingston. And the utilities didn't voluntarily start making moves to clean this up until they were forced to by the 2015 CCR rules. It's also instructive, I think, for ADEM to keep in mind when they're issuing these permits of what's happening in other southern states around us and how they're handling these waste streams. In the states where we work, every state is either requiring excavation and removal or the utilities are voluntarily removing the pollution to dry-lined upland landfills. Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, every utility in those states are removing the coal ash waste to dry-upland-lined landfills. In Tennessee, two sites are being excavated and removed. And in Georgia, all the coastal sites are being excavated and removed. Why are they excavating and removing at these sites? They are doing it because they know that excavation is the only safe way to contain this contamination and get it out of our water resources. As the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, ADEM's equivalent state agency, stated on April 1, 2019, "The Department of Environmental Quality regularly reviewed the proposals, and the science points us clearly to excavation as the only way to protect public health and the environment." And at sites in North Carolina and South Carolina, excavations are happening in a shorter timeframe than originally predicted by the utilities. So at Miller in particular, it was created by damming a valley stream. The proposed footprint of the consolidated ash will currently cover three intermittent or ephemeral perennial streams, and they've been buried. And there's 9.5 million cubic yards or tons of coal ash in this valley. You cannot keep water out of the coal ash. Under the current conditions, ash-contaminated groundwater is flowing in all directions radially away from the ash impoundment. So it's essentially going ADEM everywhere. And ADEM knows this, of course, because you have fined Alabama Power for the groundwater contamination at Miller. Alabama Power's own data shows that arsenic, boron, calcium chloride, cobalt, fluoride, lithium, sulfur, TDS, pH, and wells down gradient of the ash pond. So there's no doubt that the ash pond is contaminating ground and surface water in this area. The draft permit, as written, essentially allows pollution in place, and it will continue to do so. Alabama Power has known about this pollution for decades, yet they chose not to address it until they were forced to by federal rules. Some of the specific issues and deficiencies within the current permit as it's written, there is nothing in the permit application or the permit itself that shows the true extent of the contamination. The extent of the contaminating plumes migrating, downgrading, or radially has not been identified by Alabama Power in the permit application. In the permit application, Alabama Power has not identified the total amount of impounded waste that would remain saturated after the site is closed. Alabama Power has not identified the effect of the closure plan on water quality. There is no reported estimate or modeling of how long it might take to achieve desired water quality standards. There is no mention in the current draft permit or the permit application of how long it might take for groundwater quality to meet applicable standards. There is no mention of remediation of contaminated water that is now known to be migrating from the site. There is no indication of sampling water in wells, ponds, or streams located outside of the impoundment property. There is no modeling or estimates of the volume of water that can be expected to flow into the cap CCR by lateral inflow or flow upward into the buried waste from underlying materials or what might infiltrate from above the cap. The closure plan also proposes to control infiltration into the waste by installing this temporary cap with a limited lifespan. It does have a limited lifespan. Infiltration through the cap will increase as the artificial turf degrades. There's no mention of this in the permit application. These are some of the issues that we have discovered thus far. And I just want to leave you with this. The draft permit does not satisfy the current requirements of the federal rules or the state CCR rules. ADEM should go back and require that Alabama Power provide information that truly shows the extent of the contamination, and they should compare the evidence of what excavation and removal would take versus their closure-in-place plans. Alabama is now becoming the outlier of all the southern states as far as what they're doing with this coal ash waste. ADEM should consider that, and the public should know. Thank you.
Okay, I now recognize Spencer Lacy.
Good evening. My name is Spencer Lacy, and I represent a couple of different groups, but I've historically worked with the Black Warrior River Keeper for numerous hours, and I represent concerned landowners and freshwater recreational users in the state. I just want to, first, I want to reiterate and agree with all the facts and opinions that were stated by the gentleman that just spoke that's representing the Southern Environmental Law Center, you know, that we should, that ADEM should follow the lead of peer states that have required coal ash ponds to be excavated and migrated to upland landfills. You know, there is a calculated risk in capping in place this coal ash pond that can be completely mitigated with its removal. This proposal is just another example of historic, lackluster environmental responsibility that has occurred in this state, in our great state. And it would be, we would love to see a change for the better to, for clean groundwater for the residents of West Jefferson and the surrounding communities, and to have, you know, a guarantee freshwater access and lack of fish kills to provide for food and recreation. Thank you.
Okay, so until 7:30?
No, all the people can.
Okay. All right. Since there are no further registered speakers, please be advised that unless otherwise notified, the public comment period will end at 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, October 27, 2020. All comments must be received at the offices of the Department of Montgomery by that time. After considering, consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determinations regarding the proposed permit action and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening. This hearing is adjourned.